Planning and zoning commission for July 15th. Today here at the Goodyear Center, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Would the secretary show that six of the seven commissioners are present? Commissioner Williams is excused, I believe. And I would like a motion to approve the minutes of the planning and zoning commission meeting of June 7th, 2009, please.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second from...
Second.
Vice Chair Lox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have at six zero. Public comments, if anybody wants to speak before the commission on anything that's not an agenda item or an agenda item, I'd ask you to fill out one of these cards with your name and address on it and we will call you at the appropriate time. If anybody wants to speak on a non-agenda item, seeing none, I'll move on. Disclosure of ex parte communications, anybody? 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 I had a phone call from, phone conversation with David Prescott of Newland Communities concerning Article 3.6 of tonight's business. All right. Next order of business is, hang on. Okay. We are doing case 092200004, zoning text amendment, Article 3, planned area development, zoning districts. And we are going to open the public hearing and Mr. Carecchio will take us through.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This was an item we saw back on May 20th for a work session. June 17th, the item was continued, allow staff to do some further work on the amendment and to solicit comments from the development community. Basically, a summary of what we're doing tonight is we're revising Article 3-5 of the zoning ordinance that deals with planned area developments. Basically, what we're doing is we're basically going to rewrite Article 3-5 and that's going to get replaced with 3-6 and 3-7, which was included in the staff packet. And here's how Article 3, eventually when it's, everything is all adopted, this is how it's going to look. So here's 3.6, 3.7, which is basically 3-5 existing that you had in your packet as well. The existing ordinance was given and included in your packet to give you a reference point from the existing language to the two new proposed articles. And I know the commission, we've kind of discussed this before, but just kind of wanted to go over one of the main changes that staff is looking at. And this will mostly pertain to 3-6, the independent PAD district. And where you've seen that the ordinance is now going to offer basically a single step process and a two-step process. Typically, Goodyear has always done the two-step process, preliminary PADS and final PADS. Lately, you've seen us go to allowing developers just to go to the final. So this ordinance, this amendment here is going to capture both those processes. And basically, the top line here is the single step process. And basically, it starts with the application and with that application will be your final development plan. Staff review, commission public hearing, council public hearing. At that time, a PAD will be approved, the zoning entitled, and put on the official zoning map. And from there, applicants can proceed with site planning or subdivision plating. The two-step process, which is the process many of you are familiar with, with previous PADS, the application is submitted with a preliminary development plan. And again, through this, through the staff report, kind of outlines the differences between the preliminary and final. Basically, it's a level of detail that's provided. But this process will go, the preliminary development plan with the PAD application, again, we'll do the staff review, commission public hearing, council public hearing, PADS approved, the zoning entitled, and mapped. Now we go down to this next step, which is the requirement for the submittal of the final development plan. And that'll go through a staff review. It will go to the commission, but at an administrative type action, your recommendation. It'll go to council, again, their action will be administrative. And then, once that approval is given on the final development plan, site planning and subdivision plating. So basically, this is the two-step process. You'll have preliminary development plan, the final development plan, the single step process applicants can submit if they have all the details that are, that is required for us to look at. If they're ready to submit that level of detail up front, then they can submit for one single step process and just go through this, these steps right here. That was one of the main changes that staff is proposing with this article. Many of the other changes and amendments, a lot of it is cleanup to kind of clarify this process. And the other thing we did was in creating Article 3-7 is now have a separate article for PAD overlays, instead of having them independent overlays all in one article. We decided to make two, have the procedures, requirements clarified, and that the overlay process is going to be a single step process, that PAD application should not be as involved as an independent PAD with an overlay, you're probably looking at just a modification of uses or development standards. So it doesn't necessarily going to require a two-step process, that will always be a single step process. As part of the last few weeks, we did attempt to solicit comments from the development community. We did receive comments from Newland Communities. And that is the reason for the articles that were placed in front of you this evening. Those are in a track changes format and those changes are to show you the difference between what was in the staff report packet and some of the changes we did to try to address Newland's comments. Initial comment that they had was they would like the submittal requirements clarified, what level of detail did we want. It seemed a little open-ended to them in terms of what we wanted. We tried to clarify that with the preliminary and final development plans. And just make it more, try to clarify our intent that what we want is basically what we've always received, that general kind of summary overview of the site, of the surrounding And not necessary technical data at this point, that was typically what we see later on with site planning and subdivision plating. Though further discussions with Newland, it does sound like they will have several comments they would like to bring up with the commission tonight, so when we get into those, staff can address some of those comments if the commission would like. But with that, Mr. Chairman, that pretty much sums up what we'd like to do tonight. Staff is available for questions.
Questions of staff? Questions, 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 questions. Okay, my turn. Leave... First question, Steve. On the single step and double step process, at the end where you have site planning and subdivision plating, are those administrative and they go through staff or, because we've seen site plans and plaits on many developments in the, in the previous, so, you know, would we see those at, where would we see these? Or how does, you know, what's that last box happening? Who runs that last box?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, no change to our current procedures. Plats, pre-plats will come before the commission and council.
Okay.
So you will continue to see those. No changes are proposed here. Site planning only if it's stipulated or in the past or a new stipulation.
Okay. Let me ask, okay, I went through this article pretty hard with David Prescott over a couple of issues. And so, I'm going to bring some up and I'm not trying to steal his thunder, but I want to ask you about a couple of, couple of things. If we go to page 3.5 of Article 3, 3-6, and look at the bottom where it says site analysis, you're, one of the things you're asking for is hydrology and geology. And the question to me, and, and I, I'll ask it back to you, is I've never seen, we've never seen any of this stuff before. Geology is only in the general plan and hydrology has only been drainage and those come at, in the final PADS. So why are we asking for that stuff up, up front? And then the other question I have on, is on vegetation and wildlife, we've never really asked for those things in an enumerated way. So, so I guess what I'm saying to you is you have a laundry list here, what do you really want at the preliminary PAD status? And, okay. So that's, that's one question. Why don't you answer that and we'll, and then we'll move along.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, commission members, to try to answer that, maybe I could show an example, maybe just to show the level of detail we're looking at. And this is...
Okay.
Basically, this is a PAD for Australia Region 3 submitted by Newland, done by RBF. And in this list, we're really, the intent was not to ask for anything more than what we could ask and have asked for in the past, which is, in this overview, the introduction to their PAD is floodplain and local washes, slope topography. And you can tell these aren't technical reports, this is just narrative descriptive information. Here's soils and geology.
Okay.
Vegetation, wildlife.
Do you think on this list that we should be more in preface? You know, I don't want to get back to the way Dustin would write, rewrite the zoning code from the podium, but I'm just saying, do we want to say, you know, a technical report versus a general description and, and state how, what we expect in the zoning or, in this ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, the intent of the two new articles that I just gave to you tonight, so I know you haven't had a chance to go through them.
Right. Well, I mean, I know you deleted some stuff, but when I quickly looked at it, it's still kind of a laundry list there.
The laundry list remains, yes, that's correct. The intro says, is hopefully where we were clarifying that it's necessary to provide an overview of the property and surrounding area.
Maybe you put, maybe you need to put overview in bold. General overview in bold, so that they get it versus, okay.
We can continue to look at that.
We'll, all right. Next, go to page 3-6 and go to section three, letter E. And, okay, here's where I'm going to actually wordsmith it. You say typical lotting plan, and would we rather have the word conceptual? Because that's what everybody seems to drag in on a, on a regular basis whenever we see these things. They say, oh, this is conceptual, we may not build it exactly that way, so maybe we ought to call, you know, call, call, call it what we're, or what they drag in for us. I, you know, I'll take your comments, that's, I'll leave it at that. Moving to page, okay, moving to page 3-8, section B, number two. We're changing this from 1,000 feet to 660 feet. And if I remember correctly, it was slightly different, what, what we're, what, you know, the, the distance, the, the amenity that we were having the distance from. You know, I think the amenity list slightly changed and the distance changed. Could you elaborate more on that?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, commission members, the existing language is, should be located within 1,000 feet of the nearest common open space or within 500 feet of a pathway linkage, a sidewalk or bike path. So the proposed language is 660 feet of a recreation area. And examples we used were, you know, a totlot or a trailhead. So, two reasons, 660 seem to be kind of in the middle of 1,000 feet and 500.
Okay.
But the real reason is...
That's a, that's an eighth of a mile, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but 660, where that comes in is, that has been something that, I know council and the commission in the past, that is a number that has come up in several developments.
Well, you use 1320 for certain overlays and it's a quarter mile and an eighth mile. That's, okay. So, I'll, I'll get to, David, I'll get to you in a minute, but, but at least we see your reasoning. Could you explain the, the number three below it, where you talk about residential developments and detached sidewalks and landscapes of six feet in width shall be expected in design? I'm, you know, that was, that was just a question, and I, I just want to throw that up to ask your reasoning behind it, because Newland is going to talk about that.
Okay.
And so maybe get it up before the commission, before they come up with it.
Okay. Part of the intent behind this one was, let's see if I remember. One is the standard width is 3.42 feet right now, which has been, after several years now of developing, is too small for a street tree. It's not...
Is that the median between the sidewalk and the, and the side, is that the dirt between, dirt and grass between the sidewalk?
And the curb, yes.
And the curb.
Between the back of the curb and the front face of the sidewalk. Standard local street is, you know, it's a little less than three and a half feet. That's not big enough for a street tree, for it to grow. It's also, what we've found is it brings the tree closer to the street and it becomes a public works issue with street sweepers and trash pickup. So, the intent was allow a little larger space, push the tree back, especially when it's younger and a little more bush-like, to where it's further back from the street and the curb.
Are we adjusting the setbacks as a result of this? Or, in other words, if you have to have a six-foot median and then a sidewalk and then you're 20 feet back on your setback from the front steps, does a lot depth have to be deeper?
No, sir. What engineering has been, it is their street section and their public, well, and they're are the ones who are administering a public utility easement. What they have been open to is, nothing changes with the property line. That landscape area increases. What happens is the sidewalk gets pushed back and what becomes now, that's always, you typically see a five or eight-foot public utility easement, PU8. That now becomes a public utility easement and public access or public easement for the sidewalk, sidewalk easement.
Okay.
So, that easement is part on, is partly located within right-of-way and partly located within private property. The setback doesn't change for the home, because that's measured from the property line and we haven't changed.
So the property line is not at the edge of the sidewalk now? Property line may be running down the middle of the sidewalk.
Correct.
And then who's responsible for the repair of the sidewalk?
The city.
Even though it's on the person's property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Next, let's go to page 3.9. And let's look at number 10. The minimum open space, that changed from 15%, 12%, 10% and no percent to 20, 15, 10, and 1. And I've been told that that's a major change. So why don't you address that?
That is a change. And to clarify where that change came from is this document here, which...
The Sue Linney Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan.
Right. November 2001.
Councilwoman Linney.
And what this document had in it was a recommendation for the staff to amend our zoning ordinance. And this section here is this PAD section 3-5.
Okay.
And these are those same percentages. And it's something that just was not done through the, through the previous years. We're now finally getting to an ordinance, a comprehensive ordinance amendment, and this is the time that staff thought that we could introduce these figures that were recommended to us.
Do you, one of the questions that's going to come up on this, because this is my last question, but, and, and I'll, you don't have to answer now. Do you envision that this is going to reduce the amount of houses that a plat will be able to, you know, a, a section would be able to sustain? Or are we enforcing this at this point in time? Are we enforcing the, the old 15, 12, 10, none?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, I, I know on several projects, several PADS that I've worked with, this was the direction to achieve, to try to achieve is this 20% to 15%, depending on where that development fell with its average lot size. Success, you know, it's depended on the project.
When, when we look at average lot size, is an average lot size, the, the gross out of the whole section that's being planted, so open space, roads, all this stuff is, is put into the average lot, that, that is what's computed as the average lot size? Or is it the net? In other words, the net would be, you take all the open space and all the roads and everything else, take them out, and then this is the average lot size? Because if you have, if you have 20 acres and, you know, 10% of it is roadway and 20% of it is this, there's a different average lot size than if you have, if you count everything in. So I guess that's my question.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, if I understand Chris correctly, we would take, the average lot size would come from an analysis of the lots provided, I mean, and only those lots.
So it's the net.
It would be the net.
Okay. I don't know if that's the correct real estate term, is that right, Mr. Schlosser?
The net.
Okay, I'm done. Anybody else from commission want to question staff before I open it to the public comments? Mr. Prescott, come up, identify yourself and work through your other issues or some of the issues that I touched on if you, if you're not happy with the way they're, they've been addressed.
My name is David Prescott. I'm with Newland Communities, 2050 East Calhoun Back Road, Suite 300, Phoenix. For the commissioners that I have not met, I'm the director of planning and design for Australia. And also with me tonight is Pete Tyke, and he's in charge of construction for Australia. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, you did bring up some of the items and I, and I do appreciate that and I will run through my list that I went with you through the other day. I did also meet with Bob Coons on some of these items and did send this information over to staff, so at least they, they knew I was going to comment. This, on the different PAD changes that staff is making, they had done a very good job of clarifying the overlay PAD, the preliminary PAD, and the final PAD. It was very confusing. Now the new language is much clearer and I do like it. I was not aware that they were actually changing the ordinance itself. I thought they were just restructuring it to make it more clear, so all of us could use it better. So I was kind of surprised when I went through and started finding more and more actual changes. And some of the changes, as the chairman has brought up, I am very concerned about and I will explain why. First of all, this is relevant to Australia in particular, because Newland owns 14,000 acres of land in Australia right now and all of it is independent PAD zoned, currently zoned right now. And every time we come in and make an amendment or rezone property out there, there's always these independent PADS. So this section is 3.6, applies directly to us, and we're probably the biggest user from an acreage standpoint of anybody in the city. And I'm getting ready to file two PADS by the end of the month on a couple of areas, Golf Village and what we call Phase 1 in Mountain Ranch. And I'm filing seven subdivision plaits and all of them are in the 5,500 square foot lot size area, which is exactly what this ordinance changes and I don't agree with. So that's why I'm speaking out. So going through the, the different segments, sections they've done here, I did make a comment to the chair about preliminary versus final, but I'm going to skip over that one. I'm not going to get in that one. This is not a good conversation for that today. I guess...
David, do you want staff to address your concerns? Do you want to go individually on each concern and then have staff either say, we'll fix it before it gets to council, or we have further discussions?
Either, either way you would like to do it.
No, it's, it's more, you're, you're the key, you know, you're the key person who's, you're the key entity who's complaining, so I'm giving you the luxury of how do you want to do this? This is not the standard.
I would like, I would like to make the comment, and basically, these changes I would like the commission to make before it makes the recommendation to city council, so I could, I can do it that way and see if staff's willing to make those changes or not. That's fine with me.
Okay.
And, and also I will tell you that some of the other people in the development community, I'm not sure they're completely aware that these kind of changes are going on, because I talked to people today, this, during the week, and they were not aware of the changes. So, maybe I'm just reading the emails I'm getting from Joe and stuff, so.
Okay.
Anyway.
You're ready to come up after he finishes? And Mr. Schmitz, if you want to leap in? Is this your area or is this Mr. Coons and you're just filling in?
Mr. Coons had some surgery this week, minor surgery, so that's why he's out. But I, between Steve and I and Joe, we'll, we'll respond. I think it'd be better if you let David go through his list and then we'll respond after he finishes. That, it might be more efficient that way, Mr. Chairman. But, but I'll leave it to your prerogative.
We'll go through your list.
Great.
Follow directions of staff.
Okay. On page 3-5, section 3, 3-6-5, it's talking about preliminary plan requirements. And in that first segment, it's talking about a preliminary development plan shall be organized as required within the section and be formatted in a manner acceptable to the zoning administrator. I guess my only suggestion is give us the format, so we don't have to guess when we're going to do the submittals and find out that we didn't give the right format. Give us an example. When I was doing a similar type thing with another city, I provided a complete outline as of what I wanted for each paragraph. So I would just suggest that, it would just, it's just, this says that, but there's nothing here like, shows you what exactly they're, what the zoning administrator is going to find acceptable. On the site analysis, the chairman brought up, it asks, what my language says, under site analysis number two, it says, "This section shall include descriptive information and graphic exhibits concerning the following existing characteristics and elements of the property and surrounding area." And then it lists geology and it lists vegetation and wildlife. And I guess the question I was bringing up is, geology is usually something that's a general plan. You decide what land uses go on a property based on the geology. You come back to geology again when you go do corboring, when you do plaits and site plans. So I'm kind of wondering why we're doing it at the zoning level and what good is it, quite frankly? That's my, my comment. On vegetation, I have done some middle of other cities where I have to go through and do a complete inventory of the vegetation. So then we have to decide which vegetation is getting relocated and everything else, and I want to know if I'm getting to that, because then I have to hire somebody to go do that stuff. On the wildlife, the same thing. I've had, I've had to go and, you know, am I looking at, am I looking for endangered species? Australia does have a complete report on all the wildlife in the, for the entire 20,000 acres, so I have that. Is that good enough or do I have to do something else? There's wildlife corridors and everything else we're trying to protect. I mean, how far do you go in this? I, I would like to know, because my objection is I don't want to have to spend more money to file these PADS than I'm already having to do, because, you know, things are getting more expensive. more expensive, and our direction is to keep costs down. Going down to the next page, page 3.6, the chair brought up about the typical lotting plan. When Steve had the, the Region 3, you haven't seen it come through yet, it's an 8,000 acre preliminary PAD, that'll be coming through, commissioned hopefully sometime this year, but it doesn't have a typical lotting plan on any of those properties. And my question is, at a preliminary PAD level, if I'm showing you the land uses, the intensity, the development standards, you know, what's going on at a property, why am I have to waste my time and money showing you conceptual layouts for residential development, when you're going to come back and you're going to see it either, either, I don't even think you should have to do it the final PAD, but you're going to see it at preliminary plat and final plat, when I actually have engineered, and I actually have real information in front of you as exactly what the subdivision's really going to look like? I know the plan says it's going to be five units an acre, whatever, and that's what I'm going to do, why do I have to waste time conceptual laying out on that one PAD he was showing you that's over 8,000 acres? I'm going to do conceptual layouts on 8,000 acres? And the sketch, same thing with the commercial, it's asking for conceptual plans for the lots on commercial, and I don't know what the commercial is going to be until I get a user coming in here, and we do have design guidelines, the city has design guidelines, there's only certain things you can do and not do. I don't know why we're providing conceptual layouts on commercial areas, because we really don't know until you start getting the users in there. Going down to final development, moving forward on the next page at 3.7. On the, looking at paragraph three, items D and E, I noticed that on the final, same thing I just got done complaining about, I guess, and that is that I'm having to do conceptual site plans for multifamily commercial and everything else. Again, until I have a user, I really don't know exactly what the plan's going to look like, and I have to comply with the city's design guidelines no matter what I do. And then on E, I have to give specific lotting details, and again, until, until I get into some preliminary engineering, I don't know exactly what the layout's going to be. I mean, I could give you something, but it really doesn't mean anything, it's just, it's, it really does, it's meaningless, in my opinion. Moving on to, and these are all things that I have to hire somebody and pay somebody to do something, and I just want to have some return on my investment, I don't think I'm getting it. Moving down to page 3.8, on paragraph B, and now we're getting into the design, the current PAD, where it talks, in paragraph one, it talks about 6,000 square foot. It basically, what this whole section's talking about is, if you get in lots less than 6,000 square feet, then you have to do all these extra design things that kind of make it look better and feel better, you know, because the city's concerned about having a very monotonous-looking small lot development. Well, it used to say 5,500 square feet, now it's saying 6,000. There's a difference, because if you come in with a typical lot of 55 by 110, that's 5,500, I don't have to do this stuff. If I come in with a 5,999 square foot average lot size, I have to do all these things.
Can I, can I ask you to stop for a second? Harvey, didn't we have a case from Newland where they presented new conceptual plans for smaller lot sizes about maybe like two years ago or something, and that was approved, or, so would, is this something that Newland needs to worry about at this point in time, or do they come under the old, would they, would they be grandfathered in on their old conceptual designs and plans? Or am I missing, or am I thinking something incorrectly?
Well, one thing I'd like to clarify, in terms of, if Newland has final PAD approval on a property, then the new, the new regulations wouldn't apply in terms of PADs. If it's, if it doesn't have final PAD approval, then, then it would apply. So they're grandfathered in with final, but not if they don't have final PAD approval.
Okay.
In terms of the 6,000 square feet, it is 55 now, 55, it is 5,500, if you recall, it used to be 4,500, and we raised it to 5,500, but we, but we provided in a PAD to allow for less than 6,000 square feet, 55 or less, through a PAD, but we didn't provide any specific criteria as to what the expectations were, except for the criteria in the PAD, I think, so we're getting a little more specific, I believe.
Okay.
Steve can clarify it.
Do you, Steve, do you want to come up now, or do you want to let David finish?
Is there any other, is, is there any other clarification needed, Steve? I believe that's policy council action, Steve reminded me that they did not want to see anything less than 60, 60 feet, so, in terms of lot width, so that's why, that's where that 6,000 square feet came from.
Well, no, I know, I remember when that got passed a while ago, and, but I, but I, I thought that Newland came in, and when that was going through, right after that, or right somewhere around that same time, Newland came in with, with talking about, when Newland bought it from the former owners-
Sunche, Sun, Sun MP.
Sun MP. When Newland bought it from Sun MP, they commissioned a big study and came back to us and said, "Okay, 6,000, 60-foot frontage lots are not going to work, and we want to do some different things." And I thought we approved that, and now we're-
The issue, the issue is, if you recall, if you get less than 6,000 square feet, what happens is, the, you know, the garage is 20 feet, and you have, if you have less, you know, you have 30, 35-foot wide product, you're pretty much, the streets, the lots pretty much dominated by garage, so when you get less than 60-foot wide lots, it looks like the street is designed for, you know, for cars to live in rather than people to live in.
But I, but I thought, I thought we-
And that's why we're trying to do is-
But I thought we had, I thought part of the approval was that we weren't going to have, you had to come up with either side-facing garages or garages in the back, all these, all these mitigating circumstances would allow you to have a smaller lot size-
Correct.
-than the 60-foot frontage. And, and so, are we enumerating, have we listed these things, or is that, is that the complaint? Because I'm, I'm losing, I'm trying to figure out why we're, I thought we dealt with this issue two years ago.
We did.
And you don't think, you don't, you think this is-
And what we agreed to in what's in our design guidelines is not this.
Well-
Okay. Moving right along.
Okay.
Unless, do you want to answer that, Harvey?
Well, if the design guidelines are codified in their final PAD, then that's, then it's grandfathered in, and we wouldn't be applying these new standards. But we can't, we can't just look at Newland, we have other people that are going to come in and develop, so we have to have standards that are uniformly applied throughout the city.
I, I agree. I'm not, you don't have everything under final PAD then?
No.
Everything that I'm concerned about is under final PAD, which is all the way down to Pecos Road, that's what I'm concerned about now, everything's under final PAD.
Wait, everything-
Everything down to, south to Pecos Road is final PAD.
So everything south of Pec, do you have property south of Pecos Road?
South of Pecos is preliminary PAD.
That this is going to apply to?
Well, my concern, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, is I'm going to be filing PAD amendments, and every time I come in with a PAD amendment, then I assume I have to comply with the new guidelines, which, that means all my old PADs that I'm going through amendment, they're out.
Well, I'm not the zoning administrator, obviously, so I'm going to check to the power on that one, but keep, keep on trucking.
Okay, and this lot size, about the 6,000 square feet, aside from philosophical differences in what that really means to the city in long-term, because I disagree with it, that is, it talks about, here are the different things you have to do. It goes from, now you have to, instead of doing at certain distances of the sidewalk and whatever things that Steve was talking about a few minutes ago, all of a sudden you have to have 660 feet to a recreation area. I don't even know if that completely makes sense when you're doing, you're doing residence clubs, and you've got trail systems, and you've got all these, you know, HOA parks and city parks and, and mounds with trails and everything on it, that we have to sit there, and inside of an individual subdivision, we have to make, now start making little connections to all these little HOA areas. I think the idea is, we want to have some common open space, and now all of a sudden, common open spaces, which are landscape, are now all of a sudden recreation areas, so I object to it. On the, on number three, which is right below that, they talk about local streets. What we did in the plan, what we previously adopted, is on private streets, we're allowed to go to 28-foot streets with a five-foot landscape area and a five-foot sidewalk, and that all fits within a 50-foot right-of-way, and that's what the city, I think the city should be doing. What they've got instead is 33-foot right-of-way, and if you want to put enough room in for landscaping, which Steve mentioned the three feet or whatever, that is not enough, you need at least five. So to get to the five, it pushes the sidewalk outside the right-of-way, and then it ends up on the property owner, ends up on somebody's lot under an easement, a sidewalk easement. Now, staff has indicated that, the chair asked about the setbacks. The setbacks would still be to the lot line, which would be in the middle of the sidewalk, but that would not increase the setbacks. I mean, in other words, the distance from the sidewalk to the garage was, would maybe be 18 or 19 feet instead of 20, but they would not, staff has indicated they would not make us push it back further. But what this does is, for some reason, when you go to 5,900 square foot lots, instead of 6,000 square foot lots, instead of going with the, the three-foot and the three-foot landscape area and a five-foot sidewalk, all of a sudden you got to go six and six, which means that now you are pushing things back, and you are reducing density, and all of a sudden, why all of a sudden do these small lots need bigger sidewalks and bigger landscape areas? And the bigger landscape area you're talking about is for trees, which is what Steve indicated, which, on the next item, eight, I'm going to complain about what you're doing with the tree areas next to the street, you know, you're, you're telling us to increase that area for, for landscaping, and then you're telling us not to, and then, on the next item on the agenda. So I just think that, that additional requirement, change in the requirements for the streets, if this is a really cool requirement, then it should be for all single-family homes, not just, not just ones that are under 6,000 square feet. I don't think it is, I don't think this is a good idea. I think your problem is, is you need to reduce the paving width to 28 feet, you don't need 33 feet of paving, it's just a waste of money. It just encourages people to try, grab too fast. On the question about sidewalk repair, the chair asked about what happens when you get a sidewalk repaired and it's on somebody's property? We, I'm, I'm on the board of directors, and Pete is on the board of directors for HOA at Australia, and the HOA has to pay 50% of the cost of repair on the sidewalk. So if you think the city's just paying for that stuff when they move the sidewalk off outside the right-of-way, the residents end up having to pay for those, those maintenance So anyway, basically, the street design, you're basically reducing density and adding, adding more pavement and more sidewalk concrete and stuff, and it's expensive, so I don't like that. Going down on the next page, 3.9, under the, the table they have in paragraph 10, we were talking about the 20% open space. It was 15%, and this shows 20%, and, and I appreciate that Steve explained where it came from. The problem is, adding more open space is not necessarily better. I have been in lots of great, large open spaces that are totally useless, and I wouldn't want to spend five minutes there. I've been in really small, well-appointed open spaces with landscaping and bench and stuff, that I spent half a day there, so I'm not sure adding, just adding more open space is really providing a recreation amenity or whatever to the residents. I think good, good design is on the open space, but just adding open space is probably not it. Adding this 20% open space, and I explained this to the chair, a typical subdivision is 20 acres. So you go from 15% to 20% open space, in that 20 acres, you're adding a football field of open space. You're adding an entire football, a football field is one acre, you're adding a whole acre of open space just by making that subtle change. And when you do that, what you do is you reduce the number of lots that I can put in that 20 acres by four or five units. If you do the streets, it's five or six units. But then, the value of my land is not as much, I can't borrow as much, because my pro forma doesn't show the bank, I can borrow as much to do the construction, and I can't sell it for as much. So in the context of 14,000 acres, when you start losing, you know, as much as 20 units for every 100 acres, you're talking, you're talking millions of dollars loss, and that's why Newland's here talking about this stuff, because this is, this is affecting, directly affecting our land values, our investment, although I don't think that was the intent of staff to do that, I don't think, I don't think they actually realize that's what it's So anyway, and what that does then is just increases home prices with the whole idea of going to a 55-foot wide lot or a 50-foot lot, wide lot, is there's an element of the population that, it needs that, has the demand for that type of house. And we're trying to provide it as part of our overall segmentation of the development of the community. And then, on the next page, and I'm getting down to the end, 3.10, page 3.10, paragraph 3B, it's down below the middle of the page, says an increase of more than 10% in the gross-leasable area of non-residential uses, and it's talking about when you're doing amendments, and they're saying that they'll consider it a major amendment if the increase is more than 10% of the gross-leasable area. When you just have zoning there, you don't know what the gross-leasable area is, because until you actually have a project, you wouldn't know. The only way you could do it is go back and, within the context of floor area ratio, which I don't see that mentioned here, but you go back in with a floor-to-area ratio, figure out the square footage, what the actual square footage could be, and then if it doesn't go beyond that, I guess that's a possibility, but I'm just letting you know that you won't know what the gross-leasable square footage is until you have the bashes going up or something. And my last comment is, in our opinion, changing the text of the PAD is the same as rezoning the property, because you are changing the, the density that you allow to develop in the PAD, and when you start doing that, then you start affecting the value of our property, our investment. We invested the property in reliance of the zoning, basically, instead of going through and just changing the zoning, you're changing the text, which is the same as changing the zoning. And I don't know if, if people actually, on the commission or staff actually see it that way, but when you're on the end of making an investment and, and figuring out what you can borrow and what you can develop and stuff, that's exactly the way it comes across, and that's why I'm here. So I'm asking the commission to remove those items or leave those items, the same as the old PAD, I didn't have trouble with that, but these changes, I understand, staff kind of explained, but explaining it doesn't change the fact that you're reducing the value of our investment, and, and we're not going to agree to that, and I'm hoping the commission will listen to our comments and include it in your recommendation to City Council. I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Steve or Harvey, do you want to make rebuttals, or do, or, or do, I mean-
We'll do a tag team.
Okay, that's fine.
Dave's a big guy, and he had a lot of good things.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, as I, I will try to address David's comments, he had some good comments, and hopefully I'll remember all of them, all his questions, but probably where I'd like to start is, and this is going back to the purpose of, of why we have planned area development zoning. And through the years, you know, we've, we've done a lot of PADs here in the city of Goodyear, and, you know, we're always asking, why are we doing PADs? Why aren't we going to a hard zone, R16 or C2? And you go PAD because, for these reasons here, it's, it's integrated land uses, it's revised for orderly review and comprehensive planning, to, excuse me, promote traditional neighborhood design, to allow flexibility for innovative and high-quality development, to protect sensitive lands, to ensure neighborhoods contain variety of housing and densities, parks and amenities, and to ensure development is supported by public infrastructure and services for the property. These are pretty, these are used through, I've looked at several dozen PAD ordinances, and this is what PADs across the board are trying to accomplish. Something unique, something different, something that's high quality, and this is why we have a PAD. And you should not be doing PAD zoning if you don't necessarily know what you're going to do on the property, that's not the intent. PAD is always tied to a development plan, and in that development- And you should not be doing PAD zoning if you don't necessarily know what you're going to do on the property. That's not the intent. PAD is always tied to a development plan, and in that development plan, you need to show staff, the Commission and the City Council what is going to go on that property. And through the years, staff has, there's been differing, varying degrees of what we've brought forward to the Commission and Council and what developers have wanted to do, but this is the intent of why a PAD, and at this point, staff is looking at formalizing our process, getting in line with what the PAD is supposed to be used for, and that is probably the main purpose of why we wrote this amendment the way we did. Now to, and hopefully that this introduction kind of addresses some of David's comments. Why are we asking for conceptual site plans? Why are we asking for lotting plans? Why are we asking for building elevations? It's because the purpose of the PAD is for something unique or innovative, and if you don't show us what's unique or innovative about your project, then why do we want to zone you planned area development? Why not wait until you're ready or just go to a hard zone?
Sean.
I want to make a comment here, Steve, and this addresses this very issue, David, is that you don't, you said you don't think you're getting a return on investment for that stuff. Well, you are, because we're approving it. If you don't show us that, if we don't know what we're getting, we may find it a little bit more difficult to approve a PAD or a PAD amendment if we have no idea of what we're supposed to be looking at. I mean, it's one thing to say, oh, we're going to have this many, you know, lots per acre or what, but, but we rely on, on those lot, conceptual lot plans, those building elevations, that, that shows us what you're, that's selling it to us, and if we don't have that, I mean, you know, I mean, we may just agree to disagree on that point, but your, your return, your investment is us approving the project, and I'm not sure if you're going to get that if, if those things are not included.
Other, other comments? Otherwise, I'm going to let Steve continue.
David did bring up the format of the PAD. That was a good comment. That is something, if, if we have a format that we like, whether it's in a three-ring, three-ring binder or however, just spiral-bound, we should set that up front, and we can do that. That was a good comment. The reports, the geology, hydrology, the vegetation, why are we requiring that, how important is that? What staff looked at was, through the zoning process, through the entitlement of the property, we're not getting technical reports, that's correct, but what we're hoping to see is, if there's anything with the property that maybe wasn't flagged at the general plan level, that maybe is now, because you're looking at it a little more in-depth, is there something with this property that's unique? Is there a constraint that you need to tell the city about with your property that will affect how the city reviews the project? So that's the intent with geology, hydrology. Basically, we want to see if there's something there that flags a property that requires more review.
What I, what I will, I'll reiterate, if you create a format that you want, I think you need to be, even though these are in, you know, this is zoning text, I think the zoning administrator needs to have a supplemental handout, this is what we want, this is what we expect, this is the level of detail that we expect on a preliminary, and this, and conversely, this is what we expect on a, you know, on a final, because if we're not, if we're just laundry listing these and then leaving it up to Harvey and his successors, I think we're leaving ourselves open for, you know, some interpretation, and I think I'd rather see it written and have the development community say, yeah, we, you know, we'll, we agree on most of this. It doesn't have to be, I don't think it has to be in the ordinance itself, because that complicates things, but I think we need to come up with something that is better guidelines than what we have or what we don't have.
Chairman?
Yes?
If I may make a comment, when Dave read off the specific portion, he read off what I have on my packet, it's already being deleted, so I don't know if this has already been, he didn't read off the portion that says overview, so I don't know, this might have already fixed itself, and I don't know if he has the one that's been changed or not, because, okay, yeah, because it just said concerning, I didn't mention the overview portion, so if it's just an overview, I think that's the level of detail that kind of shows what it is.
Mr. Chairman, it's also, I mean, they submitted a Region 3 PAD, and they provided an overview of these very, various elements, so, I mean, it's not that we're asking for anything different than they submitted on their last preliminary PAD application.
Okay.
So it's hard for them, it's hard for us to understand why they don't understand what we're asking for, but the format...
Was that before, David, was that before you? Wasn't that somebody else that submitted that PAD? Or was that yours?
No, Mr. Chairman, I submitted the PAD, but he's referring to the geology and the paragraph on slope and stuff.
Right.
The layouts, the conceptual layouts and everything else are not in there. There's just a, just a land plan. There's no conceptual layouts for subdivisions or...
Okay, we'll, we'll get to that. We're on that point, yeah. Okay. Steve, I'm sorry.
No, no problem, Mr. Chairman, and just to address that issue you brought up, the existing ordinance, 3-5, it was, it did not have the laundry list of things we wanted to see. The intent there was to actually be helpful and to clarify, please look at these items, please address these items, you may not have anything much to say about these items, but please address these. The previous ordinance just says, that gives staff the right to require additional information, any additional information when needed to clarify any aspect of the project, so the city's always had the ability to require any information it needed to make an adequate review of a zoning. In this new amendment, what we tried to do is just provide a list to be helpful. It wasn't to say, now you have to provide technical reports and make costly expenditures on these items.
Okay.
David brought up the typical lotting plans. With the preliminary PAD, staff looked at that, and what we would, our intent was, what we would like to see would be, in terms of lotting plans, what we would like to see is block plans. Show us several lots. What are you intending? Is this going to be an alley-loaded product with an alley in the back? Is this going to be all just maybe conventional subdivision with 60-foot-wide lots? Basically, just show us a picture, a typical picture of what you're trying to do here. Was not...
You, in, in all the preliminary PADs that we've seen, we always get, like, seven pictures, this is going to be Mediterranean, this is going to be Spanish, contemporary, this is going to be something else. Is that, is that what you're looking for, what we've seen in the past?
Mr. Chairman, those, if I understand correctly, those are building elevations, it's kind of like the house plans.
Well, yeah, but, but we'll see, we'll see, you know, four or five lots strung together, and this is, you know, the alleys in the back, or the, it's front-loaded and the garages around, and then we'll see pictures of the elevations right behind it. That, that's what we've seen in the past. Is that what you expect?
Yes, sir, just, just a picture, a snapshot of one part of what they're planning, whether it's a subdivision, a commercial center, show us the commercial center. You don't have to show us exact building footprints where they're going to go, but what are you intending? Buildings next to the street, behind parking, further back? Are you proposing...
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, could I, I'd like to just elaborate on that. What we have, and usually we get with preliminary PAD, planned development, conceptual plan, is, is density, density ranges such as four to five units to an acre, and I think it's difficult for most people, including myself, to visualize what does four units to an acre equate to, or five units to an acre, or six units to an acre? Is that, you know, is that canyon trails? Canyon trails is three and a half, or five units to an acre? So what it does is it gives the decision-makers, the Planning Commission, the City Council, a cross-section of what to, to expect, and we're not asking for conceptual plans on the whole PAD. That's what the word typical means, is just a portion, a very small portion, so we can get a vision as to what four units to an acre looks like, how it's going to be, as Steve says, is it alley-loaded? How close are the buildings in relation to the street? So that's what we're looking for, and I think it would help, help visualize what the number of units per acre is.
Do, Harvey, do we have an administrative guideline to PADs or how they're submitted, or they just come in however the developer wants to, and you guys have to kind of send them back if they don't have quote-unquote "the typical" layouts or stuff you're asking for?
Mr. Chairman, no, we don't have a typical layout, but I think David has made a good point about a format, and I would don't, I don't, I would rather not codify the format and the ordinance, but what we could do...
No, no, I don't, I totally agree with you that we should not codify...
Give some direction that a format acceptable to staff as provided, you know, as provided by staff be included, so what we need to do is set up a typical format to hand out as an administrative document to give some applicant's guidance, so, and I think that's a fair comment.
All right. Continue, Steve, or is there other comments from...
Well, maybe they should just change the word typical to sample. Maybe that would make everyone better.
Okay.
Oh, you know, a sample lotting plan, just one sample.
Works for me.
David?
Works for me.
See? Peace on earth.
All right, good wordsmithing. Taking over for Dustin Jones. Steve, continue, please.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, continue this kind of same line of thought. As Commissioner Locke said, we are requiring the conceptual site plans and the lotting, the sample lotting plans and all of that. Otherwise, there's, it would be hard to evaluate a PAD and such, and that's, those are items that the Commission and Council have strongly directed us to include in PADs, and that's why you see that in this amendment. With the final development plan, that is, that is a point maybe I do want to elaborate on, that is an increased level of detail, and at that point, we do want to see conceptual site plans, still conceptual, but we do want to see that conceptual plan. And now, we're getting away from maybe just the sample lotting plan, to now we want to see maybe how you're going to set up a whole subdivision. Again, not preliminary plat level of detail, you don't have to provide the technical data at that point, but we are looking for lotting plans now, something that we can show the Commission and Council. This is the project that's before you tonight. These are the lots, these are how they set up. This is the, this is the street layout, this is where the parks and open space are going to be. Without that, then you'd be approving a PAD that you don't know the details of. The 6,000 square feet, as Harvey mentioned, that was a policy decision, a City Council, you know, they didn't want to see anything less than 6,000 square feet in the city. That's 60 by 100-foot-wide lot. If you're going to do something different, if you want to propose a smaller lot than 6,000 square feet, then you need, you need to justify that to the city, to the Commission and the Council. Why do you want a smaller lot that a developer with R16 could not do? So you need to justify that to the city, and A, B, and C on page 3-8 are a few of those ways that you can do that. Still on page 3-8, item number three, maybe this, I don't know if David understood this to be a six-foot-wide sidewalk, the, the language necessarily isn't clear. The six-foot is only for the landscape parkway, the sidewalk will, is required to be five feet. That does not change. It's a six-foot-wide sidewalk, I mean, a landscape area. The sidewalk stays five feet. So that's something that staff can fix if that wasn't clear, that wasn't our intent to have larger sidewalks in these neighborhoods. And B3 would apply to all residential subdivisions that are coming in. And when I mean apply, it's an expectation that this is, if you're going to do street trees, and you're going to make this an amenity, and you're going to tell staff that this is how we're addressing the street, then this is our expectation. If you want to do an attached sidewalk and treat your neighborhood and street another way, then that's an option as well. This isn't saying that three is only what we're going to get in the City of Goodyear from now on when this is adopted.
Okay.
To the table on a 3-9-10, Mr. Chairman, we did talk about this. This is just what staff, is just following a recommendation from the open space plan that was previously done, and our interpretation is that citizens, Commission, Council, they like to see the open space provided in our communities, and it's something that they want to see. If, if it's determined that the numbers that were existing now are what we want to follow, then staff is open to that, but we were just following the recommendation from the, from our open space plan. 3-10, the criteria for an amendment, B, an increase of more than 10% in gross-leasable area. Staff's opinion is that if you're going to have an amendment to the PAD, this is, we should know, at least have a ballpark of what you're going to have for gross-leasable area in your non-residential areas. Again, you're going to provide that with your conceptual building plans, your footprints, you're going to have a figure, and that is something that the Commission and Council have seen before, when we have had these commercial PADs, the developer will provide you with a ballpark figure. This is going to be 900,000 square feet in the center. We know that will change. It's just a number that the city can evaluate upon and make its decisions and review. We know it's going to change, we know the building locations are going to change, but it's something that we need, and that we figured if you're going to change it more than 10%, then we would like to take it back to Commission and Council. I'm sure I'm forgetting a few, Mr. Chairman, but I think that's some of my notes here.
Good.
There's, Mr. Chairman, the Prop 207 issue, I could address that for you, Steve, I think that was one. David made an inference that this tax amendment is, is, would be decreasing the value of their property or an existing PAD. Once again, these new rules wouldn't apply to existing zoning, existing final PAD zoning. It would only apply to new zoning, or if they want to open up the zoning with an amendment, then we would apply the new rules. They're saying we can't, you know, they're saying they want to, they want to freeze all existing zoning as well as future zoning, and not, not allow us to apply the new rules. That's not what Prop 207 says. If they don't want us to apply new rules to amendments to PADs, then they shouldn't submit an amendment. If they want, they want to amend the PAD based on their rules, but we're not allowed to use our rules, that's basically what David is saying, which I think is inherently unfair to the city, and I think we need to have the opportunity to apply new rules when new zoning comes in, or there's, developer wishes to change something in the zoning, why shouldn't the city have an opportunity to reevaluate the zoning at that time? So, that's, that's my, that's my issue on that one. Anything else? Did I miss anything? The, did I get everything, John? I think that's it, unless you have any questions.
I'm sorry, Harvey. I was having a little sidebar here.
Oh, okay. That's all I had, unless, I missed something, we didn't cover one of the issues.
David, do you want to, do you have any additional comments that you want to bring up before the Commission, before I ask for public comments?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I've come this far, why not? We just finished six months, spent tens of thousands of dollars doing a segmentation study, and what the segmentation study tells us is, we are lacking diversity in a certain detached housing product type, and that is the lots under 60 feet wide, because right now, Australia has no, all... has no, Australia's lots are larger detached homes. And there's a market for that. But there's also a market for the smaller lots, for the young couples, the young families, the empty nesters. We are not touching that market. It's like around 30% of the market. So we're going back and doing these amendments on 24 parcels. In some cases, we're dropping densities. In this one area, I'm going to come to you on 50 acres, I'm dropping about 400 units to get to this detached product because that's how important that segment is. But with the simple thing like the 20% open space and the simple thing like the landscape, the six-foot landscape area, that reduces the density to the point, when I was just telling Pete, then I can't go and do the 50s and 55s because I'll never achieve the density I would need to even make it mathematically work. Because basically, the 20% in the street thing penalize anybody at 50 and 55. You'd have to drop down to 40 and 45-foot wide to get enough unit counts to actually make these design guidelines work. So it penalizes just that one segment, and that is a very important segment of the housing market. And that's one we feel like we need to make the project go. So I appreciate staff addressing the comments and stuff. I think Harvey's right about the amendment, the Prop 207. I agree with his comments completely on that. It's just that going through, I was just looking, I got to figure out what to do now because I really need the 50s and 55s. We don't have it. We have subdivisions out there that have been there for a while, 48s and 50s and 55s. We don't have any new ones to go into the next market and stuff. So I got an issue in this ordinance. It was something I was not expecting, and it's really creating an issue where I can't do it. And I don't think anybody else will be able to do it either. So that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Any strong, did you want to make a comment now?
I just, I had a question, and I thought, Steve, that you had addressed it, and I want to make sure that I understood it. Because when I read that B3 on 3-8, I read that to apply to only those residential developments that chose to have this detached sidewalk. Not that a detached sidewalk is a requirement in every single development with under the 6,000 square feet. So am I right to, and how I read that is that if they choose not to have a detached sidewalk, that that, I mean, is that, am I headed in the right direction? I mean, so let me take care of his concern. I mean, if he's not going to provide a detached sidewalk, I mean, I don't know how that impacts his comments is where I'm going. Because if he's, I can see where one could read this as that being a requirement. I mean, I just read it a little differently, so I'm just trying to maybe clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Locke, I think how you read it is correct. Basically, I think throughout the whole amendment, you get the impression, and that's the idea, that the P A D is supposed to be high quality, is supposed to have a great street, you know, great neighborhoods. Three is a way, we have many developers who like the detached sidewalk. We're saying, if you're going to do it, just like you said, Commissioner Locke, this is what we expect. Maybe you're going to do it a different way. Maybe it's not six, but you have something else you want to do. Or if you're going to do an attached sidewalk, then this three wouldn't even apply. That doesn't mean you're not going to have to provide a good neighborhood and a good street scene. But if you choose to do an attached sidewalk, then that's your right to do. And, Mr. Chairman, just to go back to the 6,000-square-foot lots and David's, again, our intent was not to say you cannot have small lots. Staff has no problem with densities and small lots. Basically, we're going to be looking for compatibility and our general plan, but the intent was not to discriminate against smaller lots. We just, if you're going to do smaller lots, then show us how you're going to address such things that may become a smaller lots, like garage dominance. That's the intent with this ordinance and our design expectations.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, also, could I address the open space, the 20%? Just in Australia's case, I believe, you know, overall, they've got over 30% open space because they have to preserve all the washes and they have tremendous amount of open space there. So I don't think the 20% is going to be an issue. And also, we're looking at the entire P A D. We're not, you know, if they come in with small plats for areas, sections of a P A D and amending a P A D, we're not going to look at it in a microcosm. We're looking at it in an overall P A D. However, when you have smaller lots, the smaller the lots, the need for more recreational amenities goes hand in hand. So that was the thinking here, more tot lots with smaller lots. So that's what our motive is in doing that.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to make comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for, before I ask for a motion, I'm going to ask for Commission comments. Anybody? Comments? 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 Luke?
Mr. Chairman, I feel like I'm in a murder trial, going back and forth with both sides arguments. Excuse me, my throat's messed up. I think the bottom line is there's been sort of a lack of communication and maybe not enough discussion between staff and developers. I don't know. And from what Steve's been saying here lastly, it seems to me that they're just trying to clarify things a little bit and, you know, make them simpler. And it's still not trying to tie everybody down exactly. As far as the geology and vegetation and wildlife, you're not asking for a full geologic study before zoning, correct? Yeah, you're just asking for if there's any problems or, so I don't think that, it doesn't seem to be an issue to me. It's been my experience with conceptual or land use plans that the successful zoning applications are those that the applicant doesn't come in with the black and white conceptual plan with no creativeness to it. The ones that seem to fly through the process are the ones that have the pretty pictures. And I think that's what you're trying to attempt there. And I think Steve answered my question as far as specific lotting plans. You don't want the entire P A D platted out for zoning. And then the open space and the density, I think he answered that to me as well. So I guess my suggestion is maybe you could clarify the language a little better or put an opening statement as far as what, you know, just clarify a little better. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Harvey?
Commissioner.
I've got a question about the open space. Because Harvey was saying that it takes into consideration all the washes up in Australia and all the mountain trails and everything. So if most of their lots right now are in the upper range, the 7,000-plus range, and they're building, I may be totally wrong, and they're building, they want to build 5,000 and 6,000 square foot, then is it like an average between there? So like, they're averaged, does it average it down or, so it'd be like 18% when you work it all out? I don't know how that works for the whole, a math challenge.
Excellent question, and Steve has the answer, I'm sure.
Commissioner Lortano, are you talking about if Newland comes in to amend and change the lot size?
Well, it sounds like, I guess it would be an amendment or even new zoning. If we're looking at how much open space they have, because the washes kind of run through everything up there, it's not just a cosm, microcosm, then if they've got a majority of higher lots that would need the 12 to 15 or the 10%, and then they're building new lots that have the 20%, does that kind of average itself out then? Because if there's all this open space already, don't they get credit for that? So I don't know, would that be an issue then? Because it seems like it can average itself out, that they should be able to build the smaller houses without cutting in too much more.
Commissioner members, I think, try to build on that answer Harvey provided. We would look at the P A D as a whole, and with Newland, you do have a lot of open space already. They might already meet this requirement when they do come in for P A D amendments. If it's just for one neighborhood, we're not necessarily going to say this neighborhood has to have 20%.
Okay, so they don't have to create a new 20% each neighborhood. They can look at the whole picture, more or less.
Staff would like to look at the whole picture to see the comprehensive open space that they're planning for the community. I mean, each community does need to provide some open space, and we will evaluate that as will the Commission and Council. But no, the intent was not every time Newland brought in a new change or an amendment to say, okay, now you have to have 20%.
I have a technical, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. That was my question, I was trying to figure out how it would average out.
Oh, I do have a comment. And then I'll let you go, Chairman. I think that this is needed. It's a framework. And perhaps, I know you have meetings with developers, and perhaps when this is all finished with your sample, which you might even want to put online so they can take it slowly, but if you had a meeting and then you go through this with the understanding it is a framework from which to work, and the city certainly needs to have a framework. So I think you've done a very good job. I think the language needs to be massaged here and there, but overall, I think you've done a good job. And I think that it is just, it is a framework and that it will clarify for the developers once it's ironed out and there's a meeting and they have something to look at so that they don't feel that they're, you know, being strangled.
David just mentioned to me that he's okay, if I could speak for him, doesn't want to apply the 20% to each individual little subdivision. And that's not our intent. We're talking about average lot size throughout the P A D. So it depends, you know, it's hard to give you a specific answer unless we know what's in the vicinity of that subdivision, that P A D amendment. So if there's already open space or already amenities around it, depending on the size of it, they may not need to add anymore. So it's a hard question to answer at this point in time. But these are guidelines.
Before your meeting with them, have a frequently asked questions and give that out first.
I have a technical question probably for Harvey. This is not going to be one of the standalone, I'm sorry, were you finished?
I'm done.
Okay. This new P A D text amendment is not going to be a standalone presentation to Council. It's going in in the bulk, it would go in in the bulk when we send all the text changes that we're doing now and a few more. So like about six or eight of them are going to wind up as one big fell swoop because they all affect each other. Is that correct? Do I have this correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. There would be, it'd be all together. That's correct. But I want to clarify one thing that Commissioner Miller indicated, instead of frequently asked question, what we do is require pre-AT meetings. So before they ever submit an application to us, we have them meet with us and we go over what the staff's looking for. So they get some guidance from all the departments as to our expectations. So that seems to help, and I think the applicants appreciate that and saves time and money.
Any other comments from the Commission? Because the Chair has a comment. The Chair is inclined to continue this case and get more input from the development community and bring it back to us next month with some language changes and some interpretations or some not codified, but, you know, more of the administrative, this is what we expect type handouts. If that would, if, I just think, as, you know, as a citizen, I have one of my biggest landowners in the city that is pretty bent out of shape over this right now. And I don't think that this is something that the Commission should be passing on to Council at this point in time, especially if we're not, there's no urgency because we're going to combine it with other stuff. So I would, the Chair would really like to air a motion for continuance and then have a developers' meeting concerning this. And if Newland is the only people that show up, let's deal with them. But I'm sure there's other people who are going to show up. And I think we need to, I think this needs to be massaged before it gets kicked upstairs.
Mr. Chairman, that's fine. I have a development advisory forum tomorrow morning, in fact, at 9:00. And this is an item for the agenda. We are going to give an overview of this. We also sent this out via email. We have an email service where we send it to all the developers that are on our lists and they have opportunities to make comments back. And only Newland is the only developer that's.
When did it go out?
It went out a while ago. I'm on that list. I forgot about the.
Okay, so it's been a while.
It's been a while.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. Mr. Chairman, I agree with you that we should maybe continue this till the next month and let the different entities get together and kind of talk about and clarify some things.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Can I get a motion and we'll move along?
I move to continue till the next Commission meeting.
Great. I have a motion from Commissioner Peters and a second from Commissioner Slosser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have at 6-0. Short meeting wasn't going to happen. Okay, let's do, let's open the public here. Do you guys want a break?
Can I take a break?
We're going to take a five-minute recess, excuse me, and we will start back up again at 8:35.
Oh, you have six minutes.
Oh, you have six minutes.
0005 zoning text amendment, Article 5 landscape improvements. Katie is going to give us the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsar, members of the commission. There have been no changes since the June 26 meeting, the presentation that was given to you at that time. But for the benefit of the public, I will quickly go through the major changes to Article 5. The first is the reorganization of Article 5. It is currently titled Property Improvement Standards and includes all landscape regulations, regulations for walls and fences and for pools and spas. All the regulations for walls and fences and pools and spas have been moved to Article 8 so that Article 5 is strictly a landscaping improvements regulations article. Landscape planner standards for parking lots, this regulation was revised. Currently, the zoning ordinance requires three feet for these landscape planners and we've changed that to eight feet, kind of to go off some of the P A D discussion and so a tree can survive in this area. And typically, we ask for this anyway, so it does reflect currently, current policy. Tree size and buffer areas, buffer areas between commercial and residential areas. We require currently that every other tree be 24-inch box and we're changing that so that every tree is 24-inch box so that appropriate buffering is in place at time of construction. And again, that reflects current policy and practice. Last major change is for city maintenance. Currently, the zoning ordinance states that the city may maintain the area between a residential development wall and the city right-of-way. But we are changing that so that would be the responsibility of an HOA. Again, this is consistent with currency policy and the current city code. Since the June 26 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we did receive one public comment from Newland Communities and it was on the city maintenance issue. Newland Communities did raise concerns that this having, that this should be the responsibility of the city to maintain these right-of-way areas. The city's response to this was that it is almost every new, if not all, residential development in the city, we do require them to be responsible for this area. Furthermore, it's difficult for the city to be responsible for the area because often behind the residential wall, there'll be a landscape tract that is HOA-maintained and it's difficult to know what areas are the city right-of-way, what areas are the HOA. So it does become an easier maintenance issue for the HOA to be responsible for all that landscape area. Furthermore, this is currently what we do for residential area, for private residential lots and for commercial areas. Both residences and commercial areas are responsible for maintaining landscaping in the city right-of-way. So this is being consistent with that. The city would continue to be responsible for maintaining landscaping in a median. This concludes my presentation, so I'll go ahead and ask for any comments or questions.
Questions of staff? Luke, anything? Okay. I have my turn, but this is going to be short.
Okay.
Page 5.7. On item 5B, you talk about landscape diamond planters. Are those, are those now banned? We don't do those anymore?
That's correct.
Those are those three-foot things where the tree dies in the middle of the parking lot?
Yes, thank you. We found that those do not survive very well and they can also just cause a problem with parking correctly in a parking stall.
Maybe pebble creakle.
Yeah. If you, if you get them large enough to, for a tree to survive, then they take up too much of the parking space, so it's easier to just.
Right. Then on the same page in section B where you have four and five, we talk about 24-box trees with a buffer 10 feet. And then in five, where we have a bigger building, we talk about 15-gallon trees staggered. Are, you know, are, is this what our intent is or did I miss it or did I misread it or do we need to correct that? I mean, it seems like the small building says we're going to do 24-inch box trees around it and then we get a bigger building that's bigger than 50,000 square feet and it says we can put in 15-gallon trees staggering and it's a 20-foot buffer. So that's at least an inconsistency the way I read it.
Thank you. What it's meant to be is that only those commercial or non-residential uses that are next to residential uses require the 24-inch tree. The other regulation is talking about any non-residential development regardless if it's next to residential or not.
Okay.
So it's requiring 15-gallon. If that same 50,000-square-foot building was next to a residential area, it would require the 24-inch box, if that.
Okay. Do you think we should just say 24-inch box trees and be done with this? I'm sure the development community loves us.
We will certainly.
Take that under advisement, yeah.
More.
Any other comments from, for staff or from the commission? Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Come on up, David.
Now I have her notes. I think everybody knows who I am, so the, I just want to make one quick comment about the 15 versus 24-inch box. And that is ADOT told me years ago that if you plant a 15-inch and a 24-inch tree after one year, they're exactly the same size, so.
Thank you.
But I, and I want to comment though on page 5.9 in the landscape. Basically, there's a section here that says trees shall not be located. I don't know how I make this thing work. Okay.
What, what, page 5.9, what section?
Page 5.9, paragraph 6D. And a sentence I'm reading says, trees shall be located so that the expected mature tree canopy does not ultimately extend into the adjacent street. So I have a photograph here of a residential subdivision with street trees extending over the, which is exactly where I'm going from a design standpoint on all my neighborhoods in Estrella.
Right.
I just wonder if that's really what you're saying. And then in the previous discussion we had, they're telling me I have to have a six-foot landscape area between the curb and the sidewalk for the express purpose of putting these trees in. I assume that's what they're for, otherwise I'll just put this stuff in here. But, I mean, what you really want in a nice residential area is you want the trees, you want the shade, you want the landscape and everything else. I just kind of wonder if this is Public Works saying something that's really kind of encouraging bad design. That's my only comment on that one. So I'll blame that on Public Works.
Okay. Anything else or can I get a staff rebuttal? Or, I'm sorry, David, did you have other comments on this?
I have one more comment.
Okay, go for it.
And then on paragraph, page 511, section 5-4-2 is talking about city maintenance. Paragraph A, A2 is the only one I'm referring to. And basically what it says is exactly what Katie just got on talking about.
Right.
Is the fact that, the thing is that it's not an innocent thing. Being on the board of directors for Estrella, I know how much it costs to do the landscape because we pay for the landscape maintenance and then bill it back to the city and the city pays us back. So it's fairly expensive. And if we were just doing the areas between the wall and like she's talking about or areas where the blending landscape between the city right-of-way and HOA, it's probably not a big deal. However, for example, we just put in Willis Road, which is between Estrella Parkway and Rainbow Valley Road, at 7,000 feet of road. It has a landscape median, so the city says they'll take care of that. But on, and this is city-approved plans, from the back of curb to the edge of right-of-way, which is where the HOA would begin, is 47 feet on each side. So you take 47 feet times two times 7,000, you're talking 13, 14 acres. The residents of Goodyear would have to pick up that cost and that is not going to be cheap and the HOA dues have to go up to pay for that. That's the only way you can possibly pay for that. I question whether we should really be having the residents pay for, now, you know, maintaining city-owned property.
Somebody's going to have to pay for it. It just basically boils down to is it allocated among the people who live in that small section or is it allocated among all of Goodyear? And I guess the city's philosophy now is that the medians are allocated among all of Goodyear and the sides are allocated among the people who live in that general area. And I'm not sure that I want to fight that one.
Okay. I just want to say that.
You don't agree, but that's okay.
My HOA dues are going to have to go up to pay for it, so.
Right.
That's all. So I'm just complaining about that.
Okay, thank you. Harvey, did you, or Katie, did you want to answer something about the trees overhanging?
That was an excellent comment and we will review this again to make sure it isn't in conflict. I think that that is not what that is necessarily trying to say. It's trying to say not to be in the way of cars and vehicles, but not necessarily.
Correct. But we can review, you'll have that cleaned up before it goes to council, right?
Yes.
So we can approve this?
Yes.
If the commission so chooses?
Yes.
Harvey?
Chairman, on the maintenance issue, I think you clarified things very well, but the city code right now requires the property owner adjacent to maintain it. So what we're doing is bringing the zoning ordinance consistent with the city code policy, so, pretty much. And most cities in, most cities in the United States do it that way. I mean, in terms of your own house, you don't know where the right-of-way line or your property line and the, the maintenance is just invisible to most homeowners and they're maintaining the right-of-way. They don't even, a lot of people don't know where it is. So it's too cumbersome. You'd have to have separate irrigation systems to do it and it's just too, it's not feasible. It makes more sense, it's more fair to have the adjacent property owner assume that burden.
Any other comments? Motion, I'm going to close the public hearing, commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 09-200-00005, the draft amendment to Article 5 of the zoning ordinance.
I have a motion from the vice chair and a second from Commissioner Peters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it six zero. Okay, you'll make the corrections before it goes to council or before it gets into the big group. Harvey, a little housekeeping. We never talked about 3.7, the overlay district. And so when we continue the meeting, would you remind Steve to make sure he presents that? Because we talked a lot about 3.6 and somehow 3.7 got, nobody seemed to care, nobody, nobody, nobody seemed to eject and bring it up. So just from a formal point of view, would you remind him to make sure that comes up again? Okay. Now I'm going to open the public hearing for case 09200, 22000006, zoning text amendment, Article 8, general provisions. And Katie Wilkins will do the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsar, members of the commission. Once again, there have been no changes made to Article 8 since the commission last saw it at the June 26 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There are only two major changes to this article. One is just a full reorganization of the article, as I said before, moving the walls and pools regulations to this article. The second major change is reorganizing all the regulations for the different accessory structures such as portable storage containers and also kind of reducing all the language in their guest houses, casitas, and just organizing all that as residential accessory structures or accessory dwellings. So that concludes my presentation, so I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Okay, I have one question. We do not allow the Cato-Kalen house here in Goodyear, is that correct? Even on a large lot?
No, I thought we changed that.
You know, the accessory structure where somebody else can actually live there?
No, an accessory dwelling is allowed on lots of 15,000 square feet or larger.
Ah ha, okay.
However, that accessory dwelling, according to Article 3, is not allowed to be rented out separately from the main dwelling. So it would be for family members, for friends, but not for rental as a separate unit.
Okay, so Cato can't live here.
Cato can for free.
Rent-free.
Yeah, they can stay rent-free. Okay, thank you. Just checking, I mean, you know, if we're going to be an upscale community, we might have to have these guest houses.
Perhaps we should amend the zoning ordinance to.
I don't want to go.
Cato-Kalen exemption or something.
I'm not sure I want to go there. Thank you very much. Unless, is there anybody else that wants to question staff on this? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 09-20220-00006, the amendment to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance.
I second.
All right, commissioner, I have a motion from the vice chair and a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it six zero. Staff communications. Mr. Schmitz.
Eddie, could I have the PowerPoint? I wanted just to give you a briefing on the major general plan amendments, of which there is basically one that you'll be seeing. And staff prepared. I'm just going to run through this real briefly, mostly for Harvey's benefit because he's got to do it at the developer forum tomorrow because I'm not going to be there.
Way to punt. Way to punt.
Distributed a copy of it to you. Distributed a copy of it to you beginning of the meeting, so you have full-size, well, relatively full-size copies of it. And basically, it's a text amendment to update the functional classification plan that is figure three dash one in the general plan circulation element, which is chapter three. What we're really trying to do by this amendment is update the map. There's been a lot of changes since two thousand and three. We want to recognize some alignments that have been identified in other studies and add them to the map. And then we want to make some corrections where there's some gaps and some things missing. We're making a change to the legend. We're changing the right-of-way width that's specified for parkways to two hundred feet from the three hundred and the seven hundred that's shown in there. We're also taking off this corridor, proposed freeway, transportation corridor along the Broadway alignment because the State Road eight oh one corridor study has defined a more precise alignment. I'm not going to dwell on these, but these are the things that we changed in the legend. We added two notes to the map. One talks about that we're trying to reflect generally the roadways that are, been adopted in other plans adjacent to us, by the adjacent jurisdictions. And we're also putting on a disclaimer that these alignments are general and in most, most cases, they're general in nature, they're subject to change. It's just kind of a standard disclaimer. We're adding language to the text to say that the parkways would be, design would be based on the design guideline recommendations for Arizona Parkway that's been prepared by the Miracopa County Department of Transportation. And again, these are all the reasons why, I'm not going to dwell on it. This is an example of an area where you can see the gaps. And what happened is, we did the South Goodyear circulation study and had kind of an overall plan framework, but then we adopted them by general plan amendments that were proposed. And so there were actually segments that were not subject of the general plan amendments where there's gaps that are not, have not formally been placed on the plan. So this effort will be to notify, make sure those property owners, I believe they were notified during the process and they didn't object, but we're going to notify them again and, and just clean that up. There's, we've divided into four planning areas, the northern planning area, the central planning area, southern planning area, and Sonoran Valley planning area. And there's thirty-eight proposed changes total. So when you look at the map, you get a feel, there's only two north of I-ten. There's something like, I think it was six in the central planning area. There's nineteen in the, in the southern planning area. And then there's another, I think eleven in the Sonoran Valley area. And again, I'm not going to go into detail on them, you'll, you'll hear them again. We'll have citizen review meetings August eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. We're going to advertise them by planning area, north, central, southern, and then the Sonoran Valley will be August twenty-fifth at Mobile. So we'll do citizen review meetings and then the general plan schedule has them coming for a public hearing before you on September sixteenth and October twenty-first. And then the city council meeting in November of this year.
Do we have a van going to Mobile?
If you want to come with, yes, we can make arrangements.
Well, yeah, I'd like to go along so that they can yell at me again.
Okay. Yeah, anybody who wants to go is welcome to go. This is a citizen review meeting. Staff will be doing the presentation and try to address the comments and questions. So that's the end of the presentation and I just, like I said, wanted to make sure Harvey, is he all set for tomorrow now, bud?
Any questions of Mr. Schmitz, other than we're going to see this down the road? Okay, anything else on staff? I have one thing on staff communications. Katie, the, this, this packet of information that you gave us was great. It's like, we should have got, you know, it would have been nice if we had gotten this for the last five years, but you guys were busy, so, so now, now we're starting to get it. It actually makes sense, puts everything in context and, you know, it, I hope we see it once a year. Harvey?
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman, unless you have questions.